Uh, Miss Oklahoma County.
Okay, I'll call the meeting to order. All three commissioners are present. It was properly posted on April 30th, and our prayer and pledge will be led by Ms. Oklahoma County, Ashley Stewart.
Dear Lord, as we gather for this county commissioners' meeting, please grant us the wisdom to make decisions fair and just. Grant compassion to consider all perspectives. Grant strength to uphold the values of our community and grant unity to work together for the common good. Amen. Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
While we were all standing, we might get a picture, but before we do anything else, I thought we ought to sing Happy Birthday to Cleo. We're celebrating today.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Cleo. Happy birthday to you.
Ready? One, two, three. What?
You're right. Go ahead. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of April 24th?
Move approval.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve the claims. Joe, you got changes?
We have an amendment to the minutes. Are we approving, are these the emergency minutes? Okay.
Oh, in addition to the regular?
Okay, so back to item number one. I will move approval of our minutes from our regular meeting, April 24th. And then I'll move, I'll, I'm sorry, including our, the minutes from our emergency meeting, also on April 24th. Oh, the amended minutes from our emergency meeting on April 24th. Thank you.
Is there a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Now the claims.
I'll move our claims.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Need change to the blanket.
I will move our blanket purchase orders.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, District One.
Item number 12, I do not have a resolution. Sometimes I know we do a resolution in honor of Mental Health Month. Do you want us to do consent agenda?
Popped up, so. Okay, I thought maybe you were doing it because it was consent. Okay, let's try again. Motion for the consent. Is there a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, now your mental health.
Okay. Item 12 does not have a resolution. I know sometimes we do a resolution in recognition of Mental Health Month, but this is just to instruct Mr. Keith Monroe and his staff to uh, change out the lights that light up the annex in the evening to green in honor of Mental Health Month. Mr. Monroe, is that something you're able to accommodate? Okay, thank you. I will move the item.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're honored again to have with us our Ms. Oklahoma County, Ashley Stewart. I believe in discussing this with her, she is the first Ms. Oklahoma County. This is a brand new thing. It was part of the Miss USA. I'll read this resolution to honor and congratulate Ms. Stewart for her uh, performance in Miss USA 2024. She was awarded this title in February of this year, and she began competing pageants at the age of 16, having competed in 60 pageants and winning five titles. Those titles include Miss UCO 2008, Miss Riverwalk 2009, Miss Oklahoma City 2011, Mrs. Oklahoma 2018, and Miss Oklahoma for American Strong 2022. Participating and competing for 20 years has given Ms. Oklahoma County the opportunity to learn about the necessity of hard work and graduate from college debt-free because of the scholarships earned. Ms. Oklahoma County is passionate about encouraging women and youth to live out their dreams, especially those hesitant to try. As a teen director for Ms. Oklahoma City's teens, she enjoys helping young girls see their potential as a critical time in their lives. She has and plans to continue speaking to women and youth about goal-setting and the importance of working towards goals and dreams. And whereas Ms. Oklahoma County wants to share the message, you're never too old and it's never too late. As a single mom, Ms. Oklahoma County admits spending time on her hobbies and interests is rare, but aims to prioritize the things that bring her joy and fulfillment as she sets an example to her daughter and other young women across Oklahoma. And whereas her role as Ms. Oklahoma County serves as a beacon of hope and inspiration to young women across Oklahoma County, the state uh, and the state, as she encourages everyone to continue working towards your goals, Ms. Oklahoma County wants to remember or wants to be a reminder to those in the community that there is more than one definition of success. She says, while only one woman wins the crown, there are multiple winners on the stage. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners hereby recognize and congratulate Ms. Ashley Stewart for being awarded the title of Ms. Oklahoma County and placing as a top 10 finalist in the 2024 Miss Oklahoma USA Pageant. And I will move this item.
Second.
Thank you very much, and I don't know if you could read between the lines on that, but I think she defied the odds and she skunked a bunch of 20-year-olds that she snuffed out, winning the physical fitness thing for people that were much hurried junior and has been an inspiration to a lot of people to not give up on something and pursue it. So, thank you for being our Ms. Oklahoma County. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We'll get you the resolution. The clerk, I think, has that ready, so we'll, we'll mail it to you. Thank you, Ashley, for coming today.
Thank you.
Steve, Javier, are you doing this for Steve today? Okay.
And I don't know if Stacy provided you with the information. There we go. I'm really here to answer any questions you may have. We did come up with a, a number that's a little bit lower than what we had originally started with.
The first items on the, just the behavioral health piece. And I did send you guys a briefing email on what the Citizens Board had discussed and what they approved. And we have all kinds of documents here today, and Javier to answer questions or I can answer questions. Uh, the, the first one is the behavioral health piece. It's currently at 80 beds. Um, maybe a little more than you want to spend. You can certainly afford 60, so there's, there's still a discussion between you guys, what do you want 60 or 80? I think we're setting at 47 million for 80 beds right now. I expect that number to come down a little bit when we get into design development. There's 38 million sitting in the ARP account. There's 12 million sitting in the uh, separate jail account that was that original 10 million from the ARP plus some interest. So you got about 50 million that you could put towards this if you wanted to. Or if you need some of it back, that's, that's the issue.
And just to be clear, the schematic design phase takes a really broad look at construction cost. So the actual construction cost will be lower. It's just a safe number to work off of, make decisions, and then we work our way down to narrow down the scope, number of beds, et cetera.
And just for the public's sake, obviously this document is now public record since it's been presented in several meetings. Stacy, is this attached?
It's on your screen up here. We could find. If you scroll through those, you might be able to find the overall layout of the facility.
Okay.
So, let me get to the right page. Maybe I'm, that's it. Oh no, it's a very large file, sorry.
Put the larger version up.
There it is, that was it.
And Javier, your committee voted to recommend this schematic design.
Yes, ma'am. That is our recommendation. Actually, I think I can get to the, the drawings from here. Okay, so the area that you see in pink, purple, on the lower left-hand side is the new mental health facility, the, the behavioral facility. And it's separate from the detention center. It has its own access from the south, separate from the main entry to the detention center. It also has access from the east, uh, as you come in through the detention center.
Now Javier, one of the big things that we've discussed pretty extensively is the distance required by the feds between the behavioral health and the actual jail itself. Do we meet that?
We do meet that, and there has to be a, a clear separation. And so we've met that design, HOK, and that REIS are very diligent about making sure that we're in compliance.
And that, that allows us to actually recoup our costs through Medicare and Medicaid, about a clip of $834 per day per person.
Yeah, that's, that will be huge.
We're trying to be smart about the design so that we can leverage federal help.
Okay, any other questions?
And included in item 14.
So this is the?
Item 15 is the, is the actual bed count?
It's the detention center itself. It's the all-in-cup single. We want to discuss that in the next item.
So this one's just for the behavioral health center, the purple on the south side of the lot right there.
And I think the decision is whether you go with 60 or 80 beds at this time.
I don't know if I have enough information, and I don't know if any of us have enough information yet in the process to really, I don't have a strong opinion on 60 versus 80, because it depends on what type of care is delivered in the behavioral health center. I know this is based on a model in Nashville that some of you have seen, um, and is there 60 beds?
There are. Smaller than that. It was 21 beds on their onsite facility. The, the one downtown was 21, 21 beds.
I thought they had 60 somewhere and they never had more than 39.
And, and obviously we're free to design this how we feel is appropriate for Oklahoma County, but it is based on a model that has worked in another community.
Correct. I think the, where we are in the design, we're still at the schematic level. So if you happen to change your mind later, that's perfectly okay. We're just trying to keep the process going. The next phase will be the design development, where we narrow down the scope. You still have an opportunity to change the number at that point in time. Um, this is just to keep the process going along. After design development, you get into construction documents, and even then you can still make changes. It's a lot easier to make the changes on paper than in the building or in the field. So we have plenty of opportunity to adjust those numbers, and we're, we're happy to provide you additional information from the designers.
Commissioner, one of the things to keep in mind is that with our $40 million investment, we're actually adding 60 to 80 beds.
Yeah.
It took the state 500 million that had 100 to a statewide system. So, I would, I would say adding 60 beds is crucial.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm ready to move forward with the 60 if, at a later date, you would like to move to 80. If you look at our per capita rates and you look at all the information you can, you can gather when it comes to this, and the fact that we're looking to, um, save as much money in the areas that we can, I think starting with 60 is a very prudent thing to do, and honestly, we need to, with our time spans and everything, we need to keep the ball rolling, so. With that, unless there's any other questions, I'd make the motion to uh, suggest that we move forward with a minimum of 60 beds. Oh, go ahead.
I was curious if you had a comment.
Yes, because I've been meeting with mental health professionals, particularly ODMH, that's building Donahue, and I think North Care is building an 18-bed facility. And what I'd like to do before the plans are finalized is can we please have input from the mental health professionals to figure out exactly what's going to be housed at this facility? There's some dispute among mental health professionals as to whether or not this is going to be, um, competency restoration solely, and, or whether it's going to be urgent care, like a crisis center. So I would just, I, I just want there to be more of a dialogue with the mental health professionals. So we don't overlap and have beds at three different facilities that do the same thing. That's my only.
Yeah.
Duplication of services?
Yeah, I know that, um, I've talked with Randy at North Care about this, um, and some other mental health professionals. And for clarification, I think the genesis of this facility is diverting folks away from incarceration who really need treatment um, and working with our judiciary to make that an appropriate avenue for folks. Of course, there's going to be people who need to be in our custody, who also need mental health care.
And I think that that's part of the, the bed count that we got to for the detention center. It includes mental health beds, which we currently do not offer, so we're actually offering two services at the same facilities.
Yeah, and I, Ms. Behenna, I completely agree with you that we need to make sure, you know, Donahue is coming online, Oklahoma City is building some crisis centers, North Care is building one. Um, and so I think we need to better hone in on what type of care is going to be delivered at this facility.
And I think it would be advantageous to include those folks in the design conversations.
Yeah, we certainly know we need more mental health treatment. It's just, what is the, our specific niche and what we're providing?
Yeah, so this one's just based on the decision, not what we're serving, so.
Right.
Decision being 60 beds. Again, that lead, that allows us to go higher or lower from there to either end duplication or add to fill gaps. So this is just mere process to keep the ball rolling in, in that design, so.
Did you make, did you move?
I did.
Okay. Um, I'll second. I don't, it won't let me push my second button. Okay, there we go.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, now you want to talk about?
Yeah, item 15 is the overall schematic design for the detention center. And, uh, it's, it's everything to the north of what we just talked about. It's, um, about, there's a committee recommended 1,800 beds total in that facility. And, uh, all the pieces are there. Javier, he's got 300 pages there he can show.
We can go through every page. So another thing to consider is, as I just mentioned, we have some mental health beds. So we're looking at 1,800 as the base count. There are a couple of hundred, several hundred for mental health as well. So the number that we arrived to was, uh, arrived at was 2,238, inclusive of all of those beds, minimum security, mental health, and general population. And we just learned that we probably should take into consideration murder one juvenile detention as well.
That's not part of the plan that you're looking at today.
That's right.
Okay, discussion on this?
So is your, is, is the committee's recommendation 1,800 total?
That's for the detention center.
For the detention side.
What it doesn't include is minimum security. It doesn't include our total, uh, mental health beds as well. So there's been some discussion when the easy number is 2,300, people start talking about locking them up and throwing away the keys, so on and so forth, but what they're not counting is that we will have minimum security. We will have mental health, and we're adding that, those specific items to the overall number. So that, and also with that, the new standard by, uh, what's it, NCI, National Corrections Institute, which is the DOJ, is a, um, 80%, you cross over into your danger zone. And it used to be, uh, 85% occupancy was the danger zone, but they're lowering that, or they have lowered that, so that 15% flex space that we've talked about for almost two years now is now 20% according to DOJ. So we have to keep those moving targets in consideration here.
Okay.
So what they recommended, they being HOK, in the plan you're seeing on the screen is 2,248 beds total, which is effectively 1,900 beds. With, at your 80%, you're full. And that 1,900 beds includes all minimum, all maximum, and all mental health beds in that whole facility. The Citizens Committee wanted to lower the total to 1,800, which now you got 1,500 effective beds for all the, you know, minimum, maximum, and mental health. At 1,500, you're full. And that's, uh, that's their recommendation for the plan you're seeing up there.
Which essentially with our current standards, our rates, we're from 1,200 to 1,400, we open the doors and we're.
And you're opening the door in four years.
That's with the, uh, presiding judges in Canadian Cleveland County rerouting all the Oklahoma City arrests there, which was done by a stroke of a pen, and by a stroke of a pen, they could come back our way.
Well, that, those are great things to bring up as well, speaking of stroke of the pen. I don't know if you saw Governor Stitt's with their immigration bill.
Yep.
First offense is a year in county jail, second is two years in county jail, so.
And that's effective immediately.
Yeah, as I have said from the very beginning of this thing, the criminal justice is a pendulum. I worked at Department of Corrections in the 90s. I've seen what happens. It moves one way and it's kind of slamming back the other, and I think we're here. I think we've reset apex and we're slamming back at this point. I think the elections this fall will probably show a lot of that.
Before we go further, we have a citizen to speak on this item, Jess Eddy.
Thank you, Javier.
Well, I'm here to push that pendulum backwards, Mr. Davidson. What we know from long-term, decades-long studies on criminal justice systems is that if we build it, they will fill it. Even though I know we have the best district attorney we've ever had, we need to continue, um, to keep a jail facility that is not, does not incentivize criminal system actors to fill it out. Um, one of the ways it's been probably a great point of leverage, it has been a great point of leverage for us over the years, um, to reduce population of the jails because it's been overpopulated. Additionally, while we're doing wonderful things with pre-trial diversion and really on every end of the criminal system, we still have a lot more that we can do, a lot more. And to, building for a future that doesn't include those things, well, I think building a bigger jail builds for a future that doesn't encourage those things. Um, pre, enhance pre-trial diversion, enhance treatment, enhance services. So I, I think the community is essentially, strong majority of the public does not want to see expansion of bed capacity. And I think the Citizens Committee made that clear, and so I'd hope that recommendation will continue forward. With the mental health facility, or the behavioral health facility, um, I'm just concerned that, I think the Dell City or the Bryant location, Grand location is in jeopardy at city council. I, I spoke, have spoken with most of you. I, I don't see the likelihood of that property being acquired for detention and behavioral health. And so I would just ask that the, in due diligence, that we look at alternative locations to build that. As you know, we can build that without it being co-located out of jail. While I see the benefits of it being co-located out of jail, it also incentivizes criminal arrests, criminal entanglements as a means for law enforcement and other courts to provide health and human services to individuals, which further incentivizes incarceration, arrest, and everything will exacerbate the system even further. So, um, I've spoken to city councilors, um, in the city of OKC. I think the old jail facility is a, would be easy for you all to acquire that land, demolish that building. Um, and I think that's, makes sense for that location, but you may have other locations. I like the south side hospital location. And I just think those should be pursued just as, as, as earnestly as this site because of the jeopardy that the, um, the property on the south side is in politically or, or at the city council right now. Thanks.
Ms. Behenna, did you want to weigh in on this? Since you weighed in on the other?
Commissioners, I've made it perfectly clear that the, um, location of the jail is the decision made by this commission.
I'm talking about the number of beds.
The number of beds, I mean, I think, again, Stacy and I have talked about this. Is, um, my best idea, knowing that we're 12, we range from 1,200 to 1,400 now, knowing that this is going to have an appropriate mental health, uh, facility, that if we were in the 18 to 2,000 bed range, that doesn't mean it will be filled. There are programs in place now in this county, as we talked about last time I was here, about. about pretrial release and the things that we are doing to get people that are nonviolent and in need of assistance out of the jail. That will continue, as long as I'm the district attorney, that will continue. And I'm not looking to fill the jail, just because it's there. A jail that is eighteen to two thousand beds gives the Oklahoma County ability to earn money by having federal detainees detained in the Oklahoma County Jail. We did that a hundred years ago when I was a young federal prosecutor. It's much more convenient for assistant United States attorneys and defense lawyers that are on the panel to get to Oklahoma County to meet with their clients rather than going to Garfield and Payne and Logan and POT and wherever else these federal detainees go. So that's the only point that I have on that.
Well, with regards to what Commissioner Davidson said about the law that was signed in on the immigration front, do you have any briefings on what you anticipate that's going to do to us locally, or have you been looped in on that?
I don't. I don't have any comment on that. I've got to look at the law.
Okay. So Sharon, can you pull the picture back up? Something that you'll notice from these schematics is that this is much different than the current facility we have. The current facility we have is a maximum security facility with no programming space, no space considered for judicial courtrooms, no space considered for programming like AA, Al-Anon, et cetera. So all of these things are being considered into this, which increases not only the size of the facility, but also the cost of the facility. And with what we are currently doing with the maximum security type facility, it's cheaper, right? It's cheaper for us to go in and build a single cell to lock a person up and throw away the key. But what we know from that is similar to what Mr. Eddie said. We have high recidivism rates. High recidivism rates means more tax dollars, more tax dollars. It gets my conservatives' spidey tense tingling. So my deal with investing upfront here saves us money overall. And we start, one of the things that, when Commissioner Mon created Shine, one of the things that I started saying back then was that we're, Shine was designed to create better citizens, not better criminals. The justice system as it was back then was to create better criminals and not better citizens. So this will help us reduce recidivism, keep people in their jobs, keep people paying taxes, and keep families whole, and start moving us in the right direction. But that takes money, and that takes more bed space.
Right, and I think the previous intent was to continue to quote-unquote warehouse detainees. With lots of input from the community, C-Jack, we've added services and programming that really changed the requirements for this facility. You can see the green spots on the floor plan, our courtyards where people can go outside and enjoy the sunlight, daylight. They're safe. We have another one for the mental health facility. And the design of the cells itself is modular, so we can add space if future time is needed. But I think that this is, the eighteen hundred to two thousand is a good start.
Certainly, it's all kind of a moot point unless we come up with more money. So it's just about designing what would be best practice, obviously, because what we have enough money for now is to build a treehouse, pretty much. So, and you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we approve the recommendation of the Citizens Bond Oversight Advisory of eighteen hundred beds. More or less.
I'll second. And I appreciate your, the committee's discussion on this and your work on this. I know you all have spent a lot of time trying to weigh all the factors and trying to make the smartest recommendation to us, so.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
Adam D.A.
Is this our agenda item?
Yes.
No, we want you to comment more about the jail.
Yeah, so I'm asking you all to approve a grant application, a Department of Justice grant application. Cindy Grant is here with me. She has been working on this grant application for, geez, months now because it's grant season. Because we don't have enough financial resources to have all of the assistant district attorneys we need in growing county like Oklahoma County, I have to turn to federal grants to be able to fund the work and resources that I need to be able to get the work done here in the county. So with that understanding, Cindy and I have been working on this federal grant. The federal grant is to provide another assistant district attorney for domestic violence prosecutions, a domestic violence data analyst, so that we can understand, I mean, a lot of the cases, as we've talked before, come into the office and then we have a victim that doesn't want to prosecute. And so we need someone to keep data about how many times somebody's coming around, as well as other things, cases that we have to dismiss. We just don't have good data right now. We also need another DV, a domestic violence victim advocate. And so as Cindy and I were working on this grant, we liked the grant, we think we really have an opportunity to get these funds. We realized last week that we, the DA's office, was not a unit of government that could apply for this grant. So we switched real quickly, got Nikki involved. And Commissioner, to you, I know you were asking for a copy of this grant. I've laid them in front of you at each of your seats so that you could look at it. I couldn't get it to you on Friday because we were rewriting it for Oklahoma County to be the grant applicant. But you have that in front of you now. It is just to provide resources. I think the total amount of the budget would be seven hundred and four thousand and some change. That would be for the new ADA, for domestic violence analyst, and then the DV advocate. And training, thank you, Cindy. And that would be for three years. We've also written into this grant a ten percent admin fee for the county because the county would be the grant recipient, we would be the sub-recipient, we, the DA's office, would be the sub-recipient. And because federal grants require some paperwork that has to be turned in, this is a three-year grant, we decided a ten percent administration fee. That would be for a total of two hundred and eleven, is that right, Cindy? And some change that would go to the county to administer this grant for us. But we desperately need this position. We desperately need another DV advocate. We have been out at the Capitol trying to get more resources for not just the District Attorney's Office in Oklahoma County, but around the state. I think our budgets are pretty much going to stay flat. Oklahoma County, as you know, Oklahoma in general, has very high domestic violence rates. So we definitely need, I have three prosecutors right now that are doing domestic violence. It's not enough. It's just not enough. So if you have questions about the grant application, I have Cindy up here because she's been writing it and she knows the details.
Just confirming, I don't see where there's, there's no match required or investment of the county, right?
No.
Okay.
And I assume this is the first time you all have applied for this?
Yes.
So Commissioners, I asked them to bring this straight here instead of going to the normal route. And the reason being is we have time constraints.
The deadline is tomorrow.
Yeah. So.
Oh, today.
Today, yeah. We have to have this signed today. So that's why it appears before you today. Normally, we would walk through that process, so as they've learned and as we continue to learn, please bear with us as we walk through these processes of asking for federal funds, which is a new thing, not only for her office, but for the county as well, so, and these types of things.
And I apologize for the late notice. Like I said, it wasn't until last week that we realized that we can't be the applicant on this grant. But it requires nothing other than the administration of this grant on behalf of the county.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Sorry, I'm trying to decide if I have other questions. So if you all are awarded the funds, will the, will the county essentially function as a pass-through?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the reason for the ten percent administration fee.
Okay. And will, I assume if, if, you know, God forbid, the funds are spent incorrectly, which we don't anticipate them to be spent incorrectly, would the county be, since we're the entity applying, would we be the ones that are essentially held liable for that? Okay.
We would be, and I think we could probably cross-claim against state agent as well if they misspent them.
Yeah, right. I don't anticipate that happening, but I got to ask the question.
I understand. I understand. I mean, my office has learned a lot about grants and keeping track financially with the money and how it's spent, but also reporting back to the grant applicant, whether it's the DAC or a federal grant. So no, we've become pretty good in understanding what our responsibilities are under grant.
And so the reporting side will fall on you all, not Nikki Morton. Okay. 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 Nikki, do you have anything you want, you need to say? Okay.
And Commissioner Blumer, to your point, I think one of the great things about this is the ten percent.
Right.
And that ten percent is something that we could actually reinvest into the grant writing aspect. I know Nikki swamped.
Yeah.
If there was a way to provide her some help, this may be it for a little bit, so. I think it's a win-win for all of us, but that's just, we've got to win it first.
Yeah.
That's right.
And so you'll be actually submitting today? Okay, okay. Okay, I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Engineering?
Let me just, there are letters of certification, I think Commissioner Mon, it would be you that would be signing these letters. I'm the lead.
Okay.
I can sign it right now if you want it.
Nikki, you may not know the answer to this. Will we need an MOU or an agreement particular to this program in addition to, like, an award, if they're awarded the grant?
We will.
Okay.
We have, we will need to submit some type of letter of commitment, a letter of consent, and we have drafted that.
Okay.
And we would, we would provide copies to you if you guys would like to read what we.
Okay. Thank you. Cindy, do you know when they'll make awards?
So we would probably see it by no later than September.
Okay.
They've been performing pretty late lately, so.
Okay.
I would say no later than September.
Okay.
The simple funding process.
Okay, so if, yeah, if and when there's an award, then we can work out an official MOU or whatever it needs to be. Okay.
Hey, Engineering?
Hey, this is a bridge on Coffee Creek. It's east of Portland in District Three. Be this year's federal BR program. This is the signed title sheet on that project. We're scheduled for the August letting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Morning. The item in front of you is a final plat of a eight-lot subdivision that is located at the intersection of Dobbs and Northeast Two Hundred and Twentieth. It consists of a hundred and forty-four acres approximately. The smallest of the lots is approximately nine point six five acres, and going up from there with the biggest lot being approximately forty-seven acres. This was in front of the Planning Commission at our April meeting. It was April the eighteenth. The Planning Commission approved this item unanimously. There was one letter of protest from a property owner there in the area. They were concerned about traffic on those main section line roads deteriorating the quality of the roads that are currently in place, the type of homes that were being built, and the water quality there in the area. With that protest, it doesn't make it significant, but it was a concern that the Planning Commission took into consideration. But with that protest, even, they decided to approve the final plat of Coffee Creek unanimously.
Okay.
Those are big lots.
Yes, yes, it is. It's someone, it was more to correct an issue. Someone had gone out and just decided to start chopping up lots. And someone tried to come and get a building permit application and brought it to our attention, so we had to go through the proper process.
Are they getting Oklahoma City water?
No, all these are going to be water wells, yes.
Okay. I'll move approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Jessica, you want to walk us through these ARPA ones?
Morning, Commissioners. Nineteen is the Sheriff Foundation Development Project. It's two hundred and fifty thousand, District Three, is requesting this for their first allotment of CARES funds. I'm sorry, ARPA funding.
Motion to approve.
Could you, I've never heard of this group. Could you tell us what they do? I'm just curious.
You've never heard of this?
No.
So I actually have an employee that was helped immensely by this group and would love to see you come, take a look at them. They help. It's very fitting, so battered women and those escaping domestic violence and stuff like that. So this is a very good thing for those types of individuals, and they help those. And Taylor's actually been with them a little bit more than I have, so.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, number twenty is the return of fifty-three dollars and one cent to the main ARPA, fourteen fifteen. It's the remaining funds from the Sheriff Camera System.
I will move approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then this next one on twenty-one is the return of the remaining funds in ARPA Project One Zero Zero Seven Three, which is the Detention Center HVAC, in the amount of two million four hundred eighty-three thousand five hundred and thirty dollars. And this will go back to the main account, fourteen fifteen. Stacy, can you elaborate on this?
The P and G Committee wanted to put that money back and have it reallocated later because they know that particular project is probably going to substantially overrun. And they got to kind of find a new funding source for it. So it's kind of a start over, really.
I just want to make sure that folks watching know that we're not, we're not canceling this project altogether. We're relooking at how much it's going to cost and trying to figure out what to do. I'll move approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then number two is what Stacy referred to in regards to reallocating funds. And so from the HVAC funds that we just discussed that are returning to fourteen fifteen, six hundred seventy-eight thousand nine hundred and forty-five dollars and forty cents will go to ARPA Project One Zero Zero Six Seven, and that is for the engineering annex, front entrance. The remaining of those funds will go, will count for the Project One Zero Zero Seven Three, the Detention Center HVAC, in the total of one million eight hundred four dollars, five hundred eighty-four dollars and sixty cents. And then the remainder of that will go into fourteen fifteen, reallocation.
And Stacy, this is to make up the difference of the front annex renovation that was, went a little bit over?
Yeah, that project's already been awarded. It's ready to go. We just need to fully fund it.
Okay. I'll move approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then number twenty-three is the recommendation to adopt the time-spent supporting documentation for ARPA Project One Zero Zero Four Three, which is the sheriff payroll and benefits. And those funds, in the amount of three million seven hundred eighteen thousand one hundred seventy-nine dollars and two cents, will go back to the general fund, our general fund, not the ARPA general fund.
That's correct.
Is there, okay.
Is this part of the fourteen million, or is this in addition to?
This is part of.
Part of.
Have we, remind me, have we had any discussions about what we want to do with these funds, or are we just for now putting them in the general fund?
That's correct. From, to my knowledge, we've had From, to my knowledge, we've had, the B O C C ourselves have had no discussions about what we're going to do with these funds. I think that staff has begun talking about those in some of their committees, but we're in the early stages with this right now. But with that said, we got to get these things moving.
Yeah. I'll move approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Actually, I misspoke about that. These are free and clear.
Free and clear in the general fund.
So.
Right.
These don't have, that's correct. Sorry about that.
They're, they're getting ready to be discussed pretty quick.
Oh, gosh, okay. Slam and force a jail. Perfect.
Okay.
And this is the eleven million of that fourteen million?
Correct. Number twenty-four.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Treasurer's got a lease. Is this, yeah, the mail machine.
I'll move approval.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's a new name.
You didn't want to try to say that?
Any new business or other citizens who wish to speak? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll move adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
What's the organization that this? You seem to know a lot about them. They gave themselves a name.
Okay. Okay, cool.
Everybody in?
Yes.
I'll call the PBA together. All three trustees are present. It was properly posted on April thirtieth. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of April twenty-four?
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion to approve the claims?
I'll move our claims.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, Mr. Monroe.
Good morning. The next few items have to do with the property most recently transferred from the B O C C to the PBA, the Social Services Building located at seventy-four oh one Northeast Twenty-third Street. Item three is to appoint Megan Dederman as a requisition officer for that property's fund.
I'll move approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item four is to appoint Ariane Hyatt as a backup requisitioning officer for that fund.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item five is to appoint David Snyder as a receiving officer for that fund.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item six, a like item, is to appoint Jody Jackson as backup receiving officer for that fund.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any citizens to speak before the PBA or board comments? Our new business? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll move adjourn. I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.